I'd like to call the February meeting of the Kansas Board of Education to order. This is a very special day for us because we have or will have members of the Kansas Teacher of the Year team with us, so if any of those folks are present at this time, welcome. I know others will be arriving before their presentation. So we will begin our meeting. I will note that all board members are present, and I would like to read the mission of the Kansas Board of Education. To prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Now I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and now let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to approve the agenda for today. We do have an addition to our agenda of an executive session at the end of the day today, so that would be number 18 on our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as revised? Deana Horst moves. Is there a seconded by Ken Willard? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Carolyn Campbell moves.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. I'm moved by Carolyn Campbell, and is there a second? Seconded by Steve Roberts. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We will begin our meeting with our Commissioner's report. Commissioner Debacker.
Well, good morning, everyone. Yes, the purple that I'm wearing is for purpose. Congratulations to the both teams last night. Well played, and K-State with the win is a good thing. Today, I want to update you on a few topics related to the board, and I'll begin with what's on page 23 of your packet, Agenda Item 6, page 23. Board Policy 2002 requires me to, each February, give you a list of my performance objectives for the coming year. So that's what I will be doing this morning, giving you plenty of time to discuss those, make sure we haven't left something out that we should be focusing on, give time for that discussion, and then a few other topics we'll discuss as we move through these next few minutes. So I want to begin by handing you and reminding you of your goals and objectives, and I think there's enough there. You also have those included in your plastic folder if there's not. It's not that you've never seen this document before, that you're not familiar with it, but I think it helps to have it in front of us as we talk about what you expect me and the rest of the agency to do in this coming year. Every other year, the State Board of Education resets its mission, goals, and objectives, and that's based upon the election and any new board members entering the State Board. But even if we don't have any new board members that come on, we do do this every other year just to reset. So you did that last year, last February and March approved, and this is what you have approved at that time. With your mission being very close to what it had been before, and Jana reads at the beginning of every meeting, and then you set for yourself five different goals: a flexible delivery system, making sure you have an effective educator in every classroom, effective and visionary leader in every school, concentrating and encouraging best practices in early childhood programs, and the fifth one of communicating and collaborating. So you've seen those, you're familiar with those. Then we ask you to go a little bit deeper, and then tell us what are some specific objectives that you believe we should be doing in the next couple of years in order to accomplish those goals. And as you know, that was probably the most difficult part of setting mission and goals and objectives, because where do you stop? And so I had to caution you that we can't have too many objectives there, or we'll get too fragmented in our approach in how we're doing things. So under providing the flexible delivery system, you had six different objectives, and we've been working on many of those. Under effective educator, six; effective leader, three; early childhood programs, five different objectives; and communication with three. So just remind you that this is where we begin our work. This is where each of you, I think, have been focusing your work at this policy level, discussions that you're having with schools and districts and patrons in your communities. So then I'll take you to page 23. Page 23 is where I specifically list what we are going to be focusing on for the next 10 months of this year. Before I start, though, and you've heard me say this before, in my job as Commissioner, I really do have three different distinct audiences that I work with, and I sometimes refer to it as I'm constantly juggling three balls. One, of course, is U.S. State Board of Education, the 10 elected State Board members elected to carry out the duties of public education in the state of Kansas. So you all are my bosses, obviously you know that, and making sure that what you need in order to do your job, in order to make informed decisions, informed votes, that's my job as well. The second group I work with is the field. Over 40,000 licensed educators out there, over 60,000 people working in schools, making sure that superintendents and principals and teachers and everybody getting the information they need in order to be effective in their jobs. And then the third ball that I juggle, the third group I work with, is this agency. 250 people, 250 employees, employees who rely on us to have a collaborative working environment, a place that they're happy to come to work, a place that they feel that they're being productive, that their skills and talents are being used effectively. So those are the three groups, and you'll see, as I put my performance objectives for you, they are really geared in those three areas. So as you look at Area 1, is to assist the State Board in accomplishing your mission, goals, and objectives. It's a little bit too broad, so what are we specifically doing in that area, and what am I specifically directing staff and working myself to do? One is in your Board Goal 1.2, where we need to continue to move towards a new accreditation system. So that's under Goal 1, it's 1.2, so as you refer back to this sheet, we are in earnest working on a new way to accredit districts in our state. You've not had an update on that for a few months. You will get that update today from Scott Myers. So it's all based around the five hours that we've talked about. So what are we doing in that area? The second goal, making sure that you meet your mission, goals, and objectives, is 1.5, and that is the ESEA Flexibility Waiver. That waiver does require a lot of attention from many, many people in our agency, and so not only are we applying for the extension of our waiver for one more year, we've also had to do three other things related to that waiver over the past few months. We had a monitoring visit back in October, so we're responding to the findings of the monitoring visit. Our waiver was placed on high-risk designation because of Principal 3 and not having that completely ironed out according to the U.S. Department of Ed. And then we also had to apply for the use of CETE as our developer and vendor. So four things happening within the waiver, and Brad's going to tell you more specifically about those later today. The third area, under making sure that your mission and goals are being attended to, are objectives 2.1, 2.5, and 2.6, and all of these deal with licensure. It's been a topic that you have asked us to deal with for the past couple of years since you've been here as a board, this collective board and previous boards, and so today you are going to see from us three recommendations in the areas that you've been asking us to review. Career and Tech Ed, making sure that we're being able to get the most qualified people into those programs, maybe not necessarily with a teaching degree, but definitely with experience that they can bring to the classroom. The second area, Special Education, making that that you can go directly into a special ed class right out of college with a bachelor's degree, not having to have that master's. And the third area is out-of-state licensure. There's not a lot of those each year that cause us concern, but it seems like the ones that do cause us concerns make it to this table, make it to your phone calls, make it to your emails. So you'll see those three areas being addressed. Item D, Objective 2.3 and 3.3, making sure that we have an evaluation system for our teachers and our principals that accurately reflects what they're doing in their schools, and if the evaluation is accurately reflecting if they're being effective. So you know about the KEEP system, and we will continue to work on that. It is why we have the high designation or high-risk designation on our waiver, so making sure that we have that ironed out and able to proceed with that. And finally, E, and this is still related to your work as a board, is promoting and encouraging the best practices for early childhood education. As you know, the governor has recommended in his budget that All Day K be funded, fully funded, within the next five years, so we are promoting that. I will be in front of the Kindergarten Committee of the House on Thursday morning to talk about why we, why you as a board have, for the past 10 years for the most part, said we want to fund All Day K, and so making sure that that happens. So as I talk about that first ball that I'm trying to keep in the air with the State Board, that's what I see as the ones that are important for the next 10 months. As you look back on your strategic agenda, there are other items, but those are the ones that are gaining my attention this year. As I look at item number two, and that is communication and collaboration, making sure that we are not working in a silo, that we are including others in our work because we know that others impact the lives of children other than just K through 12 public education. So I'll give you a second handout here very quickly, and I think you're aware of most of this because you see it in my Friday updates to you, or you see it on my calendar that you get every week. This is just in the January and through February of this year, of the different groups that we have worked with, that I personally have worked with, doesn't include what Brad and Dale's done, or any of our consultants, or anybody else who's dealing with others, but making sure that we are connecting with others that impact education. From the governor's staff, as you know, I go to the cabinet meetings, although education is not part of the cabinet, I go to those cabinet meetings and am invited and participate in those, and feel that that's very beneficial, to see how all of the other agencies are connecting. Of course, the House Education Committee has kept us a little bit busy just in their four weeks since they've been in town. The Vision 2020 Committee is one from the House that we've been in front of talking about teacher preparation programs and how those then impact licensure. The Senate Education Committee I've been in front of as a joint with the House and the Senate. All Day Kindergarten Committee, I mentioned I'll be in front of on Thursday. Been in discussions with the Department of Ag. As you know, they have an interim secretary who should be confirmed here soon, Dr. Jackie McClasky. Jackie and I have worked together on other projects in the past prior to her being in this current position, and so trying to strengthen what we do in ag education across the state of Kansas. We only have one ag consultant, and so just like we only have one math consultant and one science consultant, but ag will be able to help us get more impacted and more presence across the state if we combine some projects together. We've been in conversation with Hartspring again about the ESI regulations. Learning Station is a group that used to be with CanEd, used to have a lot of access to different type of software programs, and once CanEd went under, Learning Station is still in some schools, so trying to figure out how we can work with them again. Of course, ACT has been here talking to us about their assessment system. School Improvement Network, if you remember that I showed you that video a few months ago of decomposing numbers in the kindergarten classroom, that's from the School Improvement Network. They are working with many districts across the state. Talked to us about how we maybe could do something more on a statewide basis, not sure that we can. Department of Health and Environment, we work with very frequently, our most recent one was with the K-FIT that you'll hear more about this afternoon. The Kansas Health Foundation, again through K-FIT. The Kansas Children's Cabinet has a new executive director, Janice Smith, and so I've visited with her, in fact, just caught her in the hall and talked to her again. CCSSO, my professional organization, various individuals from the media, and Denise is so great about coordinating all those, making sure that we're all giving the same message or trying to. Council for Public School Improvement is a group that I'll visit with on Friday. It's a group that's kind of based out of Manhattan, out of K-State. You'll see there others, Kelly, the Educational Leadership Institute, Kent State University, of course, KU. Kansas FFA will be here, I think, next week, their executive officers, KNEA, KSB, many of those are in the audience, USA. Andy Tompkins and I visit very frequently about projects that are going on that concern us both, and sometimes we just visit to commiserate with each other. Center for Countative Abilities, I've visited with you about before and sent you in Friday letters, it's some work that we are doing in some schools across Kansas, not necessarily as a statewide basis, but definitely something that we've done here at the agency based upon the Colby Index and how people and how students and how children instinctively problem solve. And so I was out in Phoenix a few weeks ago talking to them about a project that we've had going on here at a local middle school and how that could be used in other groups. The center invited me out there. P-21 Strategic Partnership is out of DC, and it's, if you think about, we have some awards in our previous building, we had some of those plaques that were awarded to us from the partnership for P-21. So that's all the deeper thinking, critical thinking skills, so that group we're working with. I've been in four schools that I can remember, I may have been in a few others, but four that I have actually been in and visited some classrooms and some teachers and kids, and then Sunflower League Principals, which is out of the Kansas City-Johnson County area. So that's just a little bit of how we are making sure that we're collaborating and that we're communicating with other partners. The third area, the third thing that I try to keep in the air is this agency and 250 people, and making sure that we are communicating with each of them, that they feel that they're valued, that their work is valued, and making sure that the environment is conducive to the work that they do. Honestly, in this area, it's hard for me to put down what we've done specifically. I think it's just how you go about your business daily, saying hello, visiting people, finding out about how their families are doing. The thing, I think that one of the best things that we've done here is we did implement the Infant's at Work policy, and the Infant's at Work allows a newborn up to six months to come to work with mom or dad, or even if it's a grandparent who now has custody of their child or a foster child, anybody who has legal custody, to be here during those first six months and be a part of the parent's life and the parent be a part of the children's very important early life. So it's things like that that I think make it a great place to work. So that is what I intend upon doing for the next 10 months. I'm sure that you and others may add some other things to the agenda, but this is where I believe our focus should be. So before I continue on with just a little bit on the final topic, Chairman.
I see Ken Willard has a question, and before I call on him, I just wanted to comment on the program for having children at work. Can you tell us a little more, is there a special place that they go, or do they just stay with the parent or guardian?
Yeah, and there's several state agencies that have this, so we're not unique, and we weren't the first to the game in this. There's no special area other than the students' or the employee's workstation. So they bring in their own equipment, whether it's the swing, or the play-in pack, or the blanket, or the stroller, and the infant spends time there. We have to have lots of different people sign off on it, from HR to myself, to the supervisor of that team. Everybody who would like to do that has to have two alternate care providers, so if you get called away to a phone conference, or there's a meeting that comes up, you can go to that alternate care provider and say, "I need you to take care of baby for a few minutes." So there's all sorts. I think it's working great. We have at least, we have two that I'm aware of, and of course, they age out of the system. It doesn't take them long to get to be six months of age before they're too old to be here, so it's great. And we do have a nursing room for nursing mothers, but that's the only special room we have, otherwise it just happens. Occasionally, we have one up on sixth floor, and occasionally we'll hear a baby sound, and it wasn't too long ago, I heard, very rarely do you hear anything, maybe cooing or something, and I looked up and Brad's standing at my office door with little Clara in his arms, and so, yeah, it's been a wonderful addition to the work environment, it has not been disruptive at all.
Well, it just sounded so intriguing to me, and we all know how important those early months are in the life of our children, so I had talked to one of the employees that was taking advantage of that. Now, Ken Willard had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, I'm one board member who needs to revisit the justification for accrediting districts as opposed to schools, because I'm not clear on what that's intended to accomplish, how it improves our game. So I just need to revisit that personally. Maybe I'm the only one, but if that's the case, we can visit privately about it.
And I think you'll have a great opportunity to ask about it, as Scott Myers brings you up to date on the accreditation system today. But if it doesn't happen, we'll get to you.
Thank you.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as I look down through the supporting information for the performance objective number two, and I notice our two largest universities are mentioned, but what about our regional universities? Because they're involved, as you and I both know, in educating our educators, and it seems, I just noticed that they were missing, so if you would explain why that is, or...
I'll draw your attention to the heading of that sheet. This is just January and February.
Okay.
That's just what's happened.
So it's just, those two just needed your attention.
Those two I've worked with in January and February. By December, I would guarantee you there will be other universities listed there.
I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Diane, as you gave this report, and we had the document to compare to, I just want to make the comment that I think you've done an excellent job on juggling those three balls and listening to us as a board on what we've wanted to do and where we wanted to go, and I just kind of wanted to thank you on that. Sometimes our issues, I know we don't think ours get done as quickly as maybe some, but then when you go back and you review all this, you have listened, and you are working on it, and I want to thank you on that. I did notice one thing, but I was getting to thank you, and I forgot what it was. I was...
Oh, you can stop there.
Okay, I probably will, because I can't remember what the other one was. Maybe that's a good thing.
And likewise, I wanted to comment on that, Diane. I think you've done a wonderful job of focusing on the parts of our objectives that are really important and that we've expressed concern about, so I think it'll make for a good emphasis of where we need to go.
I remember. Oh, okay, Sally Cobble.
Okay, as you've gone, it was Andy Tompkins and Board of Regents. I don't have our next meeting on my calendar, and I wondered if it's been set up, and that was just a little footnote.
It has not been scheduled yet.
Thank you. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I too appreciate all that our Commissioner continues to do for the children of Kansas and how she works so diligent, and with the staff here. I've yet to run across someone that doesn't seem content to be an employee. My concern is, and always will be, and I'm going to, on our strategic agenda, point two, provide an effective educator in every classroom, and 2.2, continue to develop strategies for teacher recruitment, support, and retention. And I'm thinking of African-American, Hispanic, Native American educators that we, hopefully our districts are attempting to recruit, and I know how difficult it is because I have been on recruiting trips. But my concern is if we could maybe support the notion of growing your own teachers in our districts. And to pick up public schools, there was a gentleman, he was a painter for the district, wonderful man, person, and we had a grow your own, he is now teaching elementary education. And I just think we've got a lot of employees that if they could get the support, the financial support, that they could go into that field of educating. Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to piggyback on what Mrs. Campbell was speaking about. I was working in a parochial school where we had a large Hispanic contingent, and one of the moms, who was very articulate and bilingual, had a degree in chemical engineering, would have liked nothing better than to have worked in that school for a small wage, and she was prevented from doing so because of our licensure rules. So if we can truly look for flexible and innovative ways to bring professionals into the classroom, I think we'll all be better served.
Thank you. I would like to now declare the Citizens' Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education Meeting open at 10:29 a.m. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent if...
they represent, if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification. Our first speaker is Karen Godfrey, and she will be followed by John Morton.
I'm Karen Godfrey, and I am a Seaman teacher in the, which is the north part of Topeka. I taught English Language Arts there for a long time, currently on release to serve as President of the Kansas National Education Association. And I'm here to talk to you today about the fingerprinting issue. Before I do, though, I just returned from a National Education Association meeting in DC, and I was really struck by two things I wanted to share with you about Kansas. One is, and that's where we get to network with all of the state presidents across the country, and one is how much progress Kansas has made compared to the others, many other states, not all, but many other states, on a variety of issues, including Common Core implementation, accreditation, and effective, not just meeting the guidelines, but effective teacher evaluation. I'm very proud of Kansas, and I think that has a lot to do with your leadership and the State Department's leadership. Another thing I was really reminded of is the great history that we have of collaborating with all of the education community, and that, again, is due to your and the State Department's leadership. You know, you always seek and value the input of others, and I think that we come together and generally are able to find a way to move forward. And I truly believe that those two facts, our progress and our collaboration, are intimately intertwined, and one doesn't happen without the other. There are occasionally issues that we don't come to a consensus on, and I hope that fingerprinting will not be one of those. You know, without question, KNEA shares the same desire you have, to have every child have ethical teachers, to have upstanding teachers, to have teachers who are good role models, and teachers who promote the safety of our children rather than threaten it. I mean, without question, we all believe in that. However, we don't think that submitting every teacher to fingerprinting is a way to ensure that. And granted, there have been a few isolated examples of teachers getting through the system because no one reported them. But to put all teachers through this effort and expense because of very few is unnecessary. Even one teacher who's broken the law is a concern. I understand that, but there has to be a more efficient way to deal with this. It's a little like keeping the whole class in from recess because of one child. You know, you're punishing the whole group in that way. And the ratio of blameless teachers compared to the ratio of that one child in a classroom of, let's say, 25, is much greater. You know, we have a handful of teachers who have committed a misdeed compared to the, I think the estimate is about 35,000 teachers who are upstanding teachers, just don't happen to have been fingerprinted. I'd also like you to think about the other employees and volunteers who have significant contact with all of our children. You know, why would we single out just the teachers? It's also disturbing to think that teachers may face consequences before even he or she is found guilty of a misdeed. That doesn't really fit the concept of innocent until proven guilty. Teaching today has become a very challenging job, is sometimes criticized, and so this fingerprinting regulation feels to some like one more attack. The prospect of paying $50 to prove that you are worthy of the profession is disturbing if you've spent 20 years in the community trying to do good in the community. And if it weren't solely the teacher's responsibility, that would probably help. There's also the issue that teachers who live in a place where fingerprinting isn't readily accessible. So now not only is it an expense burden, but it's also a time burden to find a way to take care of that. Kansas is blessed with amazing teachers, and we want all of our children to have these amazing teachers, I know that. We just cannot support fingerprinting as being a solution to a very limited problem. Thank you for your time, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Godfrey, you indicated that there was surely a more efficient way of accomplishing the goal that the fingerprinting is intended to address. What would that be?
And you think I have a solution, don't you? And I know that you have been dealing with this issue for two, three years. I mean, I know that it's not an easy solution. We're asking 35,000 teachers to do something when we could ask a much more limited number of district attorney, county attorneys to do the reporting that they're expected to do by law. That would be one possible solution. And I know we haven't seen that working very well at this stage. I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. I'm looking at your letter to Governor Brownback from December, December 2nd. I presume you wrote this letter that says, "Kansas National Education Association members draw from a diverse group of Kansas professionals who are the experts on their own local circumstances." Does that sound familiar?
I don't have it in front of me, but that last part didn't sound right.
They are focused on students and schools. Their voices must be a part of any future conversations. Does that sound... I'd have to go along with that. I really would. But I was the only member of this board to vote against requiring fingerprints of long-tenured teachers. It just doesn't make sense to me. And alliances in politics are very odd sometimes, intenuous and so forth, because I've been really praying about the idea that, of asking the question, and I did that the first year on the sport, is teaching union work? And I've been asking a lot of people about that. And what I've come down to decide is, it isn't. The teaching isn't union work. And I know I'm going to get my name in the paper probably, and that's not why I'm saying this, and I'm not anti-union. I put myself through college as a member of a service union, and I couldn't have made a living without protection from the union. But my concern with the way we approach this whole thing is we have to treat all of our teachers as if they're the same, and professionals don't do that. And so I think one of the ways we can ferret out the bad actors without fingerprinting is to have a more open and freer society where people can come and go more in our classrooms. And I would wonder if you would support a move that would welcome the public more into our classrooms instead of this tendency that we're building now to have our schools as fortresses, sort of protected against the bad public. Do you have an opinion on that, Madam?
And I would be glad to address the union issue at another time, but I don't know that it's as relevant to the fingerprinting issue.
Thank you. I was going to comment to remind our board that our questions are for clarification on the statements of the speaker, not for advancing a new topic. So if you have anything further to say, that's fine, but I did want to clarify that.
Okay. Trying to put it in the context of the fingerprinting issue, I would think that the concern is making sure that we know that these teachers, the people who are in our classrooms, are going to promote the kinds of standards and ethics that we want. So the more open it becomes, I think the more challenging that would be, because the idea would be that we want to make sure that all those people have met some kind of standard. By using a preparation program, we do, at least, granted, they don't necessarily get fingerprinted, but we, there's a lot of checks and balances on whether those people are ready to be in charge of our children.
Our next speaker then is John Morton. He will be followed by Tom Krebs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things we've been doing, and we're one of the other universities, I'm here representing Emporia State University this morning, we've been trying and having some dialogue this year about how we might best support the board, the department, school districts and schools relative to the implementation of the Common Core. To that end, this is just hot off the press, you're the first group to see this, we are going to sponsor a one-day drive-in conference on June 13th entitled Common Sense About the Common Core, trying to provide districts and schools with some practical implementation tips, also, more importantly, providing job-alike sessions to allow teachers, administrators, other personnel to come together to talk about issues that they're confronting with Common Core. Are we short one?
Yeah.
We met as a steering committee yesterday, and as a result of that, they asked me to come today and extend an invitation to the board, any board member who would like to attend this conference to be our guest for the day. The conference runs from 10 to 4:00. Dr. Debacker is going to give our welcome that day. She's a proud Emporia State graduate, I might add. And we're excited about this as kind of a springboard, because I think one of the things I get from my students is that they're so immersed in the implementation, they seldom have time to sit back and reflect and talk to other practitioners about this kind of thing. So that's what we hope is going to accomplish. This is going to be the springboard that day. So we're going to establish follow-up electronic communication devices, as well as bringing together job-alike groups throughout the next school year in an effort to really up the level of dialogue. So I wanted to extend that invitation to you this morning. We look forward to you. If you have an interest in this, just let me know. You can contact me at Emporia State. My email is j-morton@emporia.edu, and you'll get that down, so we'll go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Krebs, followed by Tammy Bartels.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the State Board. Happy to see all of you. I'm standing here today representing Kansas Association of School Boards and sharing some publications that are recently available. We've given you either the press release or the actual document. One of them, I apologize, I think the second page may not be there, but we'll work to get that done. The first one I want to share is this one that's stapled together, and it's School Funding at Risk and All Day K. My colleague Mark Tolman has put all of these together. This will be shared with the All Day K Legislative Group that's meeting tomorrow morning. It deals into at-risk spending results and the effect of All Day K and the like, so this is a very good document. The second one that I apologize for starts out, it's blank on the back, but it starts out with the quarter-million-dollar classroom, and it takes us through, the fact is, there have been ads talking about where does a quarter million dollars go when we allocate 20 kids to a class and what we spend per kid, well, about $12,800. Well, this breaks down through State Department spending, where that money goes. Now, the thing is, is that, I'm going to be very careful about choosing my words today, but the fact is, when you invest money, you expect a return. The advertisement that is often seen only talks about spending the money, and it never talks about the investing, and it never talks about the return. And the fact is, when, I will share with you data that suggests that when you spend a quarter of a million dollars a classroom over a working career with additional education, you get a return over a million dollars above that from additional earnings. You also spend a lot less money on medical care, adjudication, criminal activity, et cetera, et cetera. So the fact is, is a quarter of a million dollars per year to spend on the classroom a lot, and the answer is yes, but the fact is, you get a great return for the money, and we think that's an important part of the discussion. The last one, if you really want to roll your eyeballs at some point counting all the money, that we have put out in the last couple days, an accounting system to look at where all the money goes that is spent on Kansas education. And I want to draw you to a couple bullets that are in the middle of the page. The second from the bottom, general fund budgets, major operating funds for school districts are down $128 million, although this has been mostly offset by increased local option budgets and higher property taxes. And the last one is, adjusted for inflation, total spending is down $385 million since 2009, and is barely broken even since 2011. For example, that's one of the reasons we testified against financial literacy as a mandate, because operating budgets are down and school districts cannot simply keep absorbing all the things that are asked of us when the funding is not there to keep it up. And we do appreciate the State Board's support for the legislature funding all the things that are in the statute. So with that, time is up. I'd be happy to take questions.
Tammy, you're next, and I'm going to have you say your name again, so I'll remember how to pronounce it next time.
I'm Tammy Bartels, but I will answer to Bartels, because that is how it is spelled. I argue with my husband all the time about that. I am the president of Kansas PTA, and I'm here today to just kind of talk about three things with you that are going on with PTA that might be of interest to this board. The first is National PTA has revamped and is doing their Schools of Excellence Program again. If you've known PTA, you know that they had that several years ago, and it kind of went to the wayside, and it is back. There are seven schools in the state of Kansas that are currently in the process of becoming a National PTA School of Excellence. It's Shawnee Mission South, Oak Park Carpenter, Shawnee Mission East, Westwood View, Comanche, Francis Willard, Shawnee Mission North, and Oak Grove, and those are all greater Kansas City area schools, Shawnee and Turner and KCK. The School of Excellence Program, to get the award, the school had to, the PTA unit at the school had to apply to join the program, and then they completed a family and school scan, where they completed a questionnaire, did a survey of the families, and they submitted that to National PTA. And National PTA generated a personalized education roadmap to excellence that each school was provided with, and then they are now in the process of going through and completing the steps in their roadmap. And they will find out in June this year, I believe, if they have qualified as a School of Excellence, and they will receive a big kit to help them celebrate, will celebrate them at the state PTA level and recognize their efforts. Registration for the next school year opens up in April, and we're going to encourage many more Kansas schools to join. Initially, the 27 schools from Kansas applied for it, and the process is so rigorous that we're down to seven now. So we're hoping that more will either sign back up or consider doing it again this year. The next thing I wanted to share was that next week is PTA Take Your Family to School Week. It's February 17 through 21, where PTA encourages families to go to their children's schools, learn about what's going on. National PTA does have a toolkit that's available to help schools and PTAs celebrate Take Your Family to School Week. And the last thing I have, I'm passing around a flyer that has information about National PTA Standards for Family-School Partnership. This board in 2002 endorsed the National PTA Standards. At the time, they were known as National PTA Standards for Parent-Family Involvement. They were endorsed by this board in 2002 as a great way to support family engagement. And then those were re-endorsed in 2008 by this board again. You can find them on page 71 of the QPA manual. And so many of you were not on the board when this was adopted either time, and so I wanted to share those standards with you and remind you of the importance of families and schools. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Dave Trebert, and I'll let you correct me if I mispronounced.
That's quite all right, Madam Chairman. I get called a lot of different things. My name is Dave Trebert. I'm president of Kansas Policy Institute, and it's my pleasure to be here this morning. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask about a postcard that the board, I believe it was the board sent out, or the Department of Ed. As I pass these around, before I get to the question, just let me take a second to explain why I'm asking the question. There is, as we heard last week in the Education Committee from Dr. Debacker, there's a lot of good achievement happening in Kansas, but we also have some problems. And one of the questions on this postcard talks about ACT achievement. And it's wonderful to know that there were 13 students in Kansas, for example, that had perfect scores on the ACT. We should celebrate our successes, but when we only celebrate our successes and we don't share all the information, parents and others don't have the information, they don't understand that we have a need to still solve some very serious problems. And so I would encourage you, when you, if you are going to talk about achievement, that we talk about all the achievement, not just the wonderful things that are happening, but also to focus on what the challenges are. For example, there is on ACT, as noted here, the composite score is not really reflective of what goes on, and it's a long story, but that's the case with every composite score, whether it's a district or it's a state. When we look at the, we have some very large achievement gaps, even on ACT. As you'll note, the white students' achievement score in Kansas of 22.6 is above the state average. It's the 21st highest in the nation. Hispanic students' score of 19.3 is... Hispanic students' score of 19.3 is the 24th highest, and black students' score of 17.5 is the 19th highest among states for black students. To put that in perspective, there's a paragraph below that shows the college readiness scores according to ACT. And you can see there that while black score, and this is for all four subjects of English, reading, math, and science, black students, 7% were college-ready according to their score on ACT. 14% college readiness for Hispanics, and 35% college readiness for white students. I think all of those have improved, and that's good, but the fact that these very large gaps still exist indicates there's a lot of work to do. And when we only talk about the good things, some of the incentive is lost. It's kind of human nature, I think. I do the same thing, and not understanding that we really have to focus on what all the issues are. And there was also a question on there about the number of teachers. As Ms. Godfrey referenced, there are 34,000, almost 35,000 teachers in Kansas. The postcard indicates that there was over 101,000 teachers in Kansas, and I just wasn't sure why there was a difference there, but that's, the 34,778 comes from the state website as KSDE counts all teachers. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and ask a few questions, make that observation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Treibert? Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At your website, that I just lost, there's a reference to the gentleman who's part of, was it C-Trust that's working with Kansas City and Missouri at this time? Let Teachers Lead So Kansas City Schools Can Succeed. This is at your website. Are you familiar with this?
Which website are you talking?
I'm at the kansaspolicy.org. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if, I was just going to ask if you have an opinion. I realize that I'm crossing state line, but a lot that goes on in Missouri affects what happens in my area, Johnson County. And for those of you maybe unfamiliar, there's, Kansas City, Missouri Public Schools have just been awful for 40 years, and now people are concerned about a privatization. And there's a lot to be discussed. Just because you had a link to this, I thought I would ask you about it.
I believe that's a link to a news story, not something that we wrote.
Right.
So I'd be happy to discuss any, answer any questions you have afterward.
I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Treibert, you asked us to be open about numbers, which I think we all strive to be as far as achievement. I've worked with schools for a long, long time, so I would agree, we all need to be open with numbers and look at not only our challenges, but our opportunities and what we can do to further promote and improve the learning of childrens in school. I guess I'd ask your institution to do the same thing, because typically when you, at least in the past, have reported achievement numbers of proficiency, you've only reported the top two categories, and the state of Kansas refers to the top three categories as far as proficient and above. So when you look at those numbers, I would ask that you also look at the numbers the way we do, because quite frankly, I feel that our numbers are better than what you typically report.
May I respond to that?
In a very brief response, our time is short.
Certainly. And the reason I want to respond is, I think there may be some misunderstanding. What we've reported is not, we've not called the top two proficient. We've said there is a difference between what is in the top two categories, which the board or the department defines as full comprehension of grade-appropriate material, and proficient, which requires only satisfactory comprehension. All we've, we've been very clear, or at least we've tried, to say that there is a difference. We're simply saying that there is a difference. As we've learned from talking with parents across the state, they don't understand, if they hear meets standard and proficient, it's hard to put some of those things in context. When you understand that full comprehension in Kansas is considered advanced, as defined by the Department of Education, that's a concern to some parents. All we're doing is pointing out that there is a difference. We're not saying that the top two are the proficiency numbers. We're just saying there's a difference between what the state considers to be proficient and what the state considers to be full comprehension.
I understand. I just feel like your information's misleading. Thank you.
Thank you. The State Board Citizen Open Forum is closed at 10:55 a.m. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The State Board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at future meetings. We will take a five-minute break and resume at 11 o'clock. Thank you. Well, our five minutes stretched to a little longer, but we are so thrilled to have our Teacher of the Year team with us. If our board members can take a minute to get seated, and Mr. Dennis is going to introduce them.
Madam Chairman, members of board, Diane and I is always excited to have the Teacher of the Year team. This is an exciting group, and I told them a little bit ago out in the hallway, what we ought to do is ought to have a red carpet here, you know? They're worth a lot more than the movie stars, and they, what somebody suggested, what, the big ball? The big ball? Yeah, whirling in and have a spotlight on them. They deserve that. They deserve that. But we're excited they're here today. Yeah. But they are going to introduce themselves, but they recruit, they really work well together, and we're real proud of them, and they've met recently with the folks across the street, and I thought they did a phenomenal job. And some of the questions they had, I thought was quite interesting and very good, and they responded, I thought, in a very professional way and did a good job. So I think they've got this all lined out. They're going to introduce themselves and tell you where they're from, and I think in your board packet, you should have the picture of them and a little bit, a little bit about them. So Brandy, you're excited, aren't you? This is as good as it gets for us.
Good morning. My name is Brandy Leggett, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Prairie Ridge Elementary School in the DeSoto School District. On behalf of the 2014 Kansas Teacher of the Year team, we would like to thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to visit with us today. First, we'd like to recognize and thank you for the many positive things you do for education. We would also like to share our appreciation for the countless hours you spend on and energy you devote to education in the state of Kansas. In preparing to visit with you today, my research helped me to recognize the membership of this group includes many committee leaders who have put in countless hours in years in education. Understanding how successful each of you has been, I know the initial foundation of your success had to start somewhere. Perhaps it was born through lessons taught and examples set by your parents, teachers, coaches, or other family members. Somewhere along the way, success was engraved in each of you. Today, we have countless students who need the same support and guidance. As leaders and servants to our communities, we have a moral responsibility to ensure that each and every student has access to a meaningful education. Research has shown that learning is most successful when what students are learning is real, relevant, engaging, and prepares them for the life they are learning now and will face after high school. Regardless of where students go to school, they all deserve this quality education. All students should have the ability to think critically and make decisions. All students should be given the chance to lead discussions. All students should have the chance to be creative, collaborate, and communicate with others. If given the opportunity, many students will rise to the challenge because it is meaningful to them. Take, for example, Jada. In grades K to 2, she struggled in school. She was a shy girl who rarely spoke. She was always in the lowest reading groups and pulled out of class for extra help. Her parents said she dreaded going to school because she had no confidence in her ability to do well, oftentimes saying that she was stupid. This school year, Jada has been given leadership opportunities in class. Instead of always being put with other struggling students, she works with students of all ability levels. Instead of being told what she can't do, there were high expectations of what she could do. In a recent project on community, Jada volunteered to lead the class presentation to the Shawnee City Council and other city leaders on successes and improvements needed for the city of Shawnee. For a student who rarely spoke before, we were all able to discover that she is a wonderful speaker with a lot of creativity. On recent reading map assessments, Jada went from seven points below the third-grade goal in the fall to one point above on the winter maps. Her parents say she now loves coming to school and talks about her day nonstop each night. This is why we can't write kids off as struggling students without truly building relationships where we can find out where they can shine. This is why we need to make learning relevant where students can be in the driver's seat. We can't, we can't rely on one-size-fits-all assessments to measure whether students can best memorize facts. I truly believe all of us in this room want the absolute best for students. I look forward to your continued teamwork and support in helping Kansas have the number one educational system in the country. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Bailey, and I teach English Language Arts at Valley Center High School for the Valley Center District. Recently, one of my junior students shared these words of wisdom. Everyone has a comfort zone, but there's also the area outside of that comfort zone, and that is where the magic happens. These words resonated with my personal beliefs about education. For me, the magic occurred as a result of my childhood education, when teachers pushed me to reach my potential and later through my desire to improve as an educator. We all believe that the future of our world resides in the hearts and minds of each student who walks through our doors. Their educational experiences will determine whether they are prepared for a 21st-century world that demands adaptability, initiative, creativity, and the abilities to collaborate and communicate. Quite simply, educators carry a great responsibility to meet the needs of our students in a rapidly changing world. Since students' needs are paramount, educators adapt. As a result, the classrooms that you walk in today are very different than the classrooms you left upon your graduation. Why? Because teachers are stepping out of their comfort zones. 20 years ago, when I began teaching, I lectured and students took notes. We read classical literature, and I led discussion. I taught the same manner that my teachers had taught me. Today, my classroom is vastly different. No longer is the content the focus. Instead, content is the medium by which students initiate and lead discussions. Instead of me delivering the knowledge to the students, they learn about the cultural and historical background of literature as a natural result of their own questions that they generate and then investigate. They become the experts, and I guide their learning by assisting them in creating individual goals with action steps. My students maintain a course blog where they engage in reflective writing and critical thinking and discussions by asking each other questions and extending the dialogue started by other students who they wouldn't normally talk to. My students are now more engaged in their learning, and I'm a partner and a guide. Contrary to what some may believe, teachers are not resistant to change. We are disrupting the traditional school classroom. As a result, our students are also stepping out of their comfort zones. Last semester, Alice, a junior, chose a difficult topic to research. After a few days into her research, she begged me to allow her to change the topic, because as she shared, it was just too difficult. She was not accustomed to struggling in her writing, and she was experiencing discomfort. After encouraging her to persist, but still giving her the option to choose a different topic, she decided to push through. As a result, she experienced tremendous growth as a writer and as a critical thinker. Most importantly, she learned a valuable lesson. I know this because in her essay she shared, everyone has a comfort zone, but there's also the area outside of the comfort zone, and that is where the magic happens. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Smith. I teach eighth grade American history at Lakewood Middle School in the Blue Valley School District in O'Grill and Park, Kansas. Democracy, rights, opportunity, liberty, and equality. Our country's pursuit of these founding American ideals is the lens to learning in my middle school social studies classroom. As we weave our way through American history, my ultimate goal is for students, regardless of his or her background or experience, to find opportunities to find their voice. In using my message for today, I continue to circle back to this ultimate goal, helping my students find their voices. So I'd like to spend my time today letting their voices be heard, advocating for the specific needs of the middle school learner. Here's what their voices had to say. My student, Michael. Middle school is an important transition time. Our bodies and minds are really changing. We need rigorous academics, but we need to be understood as young people, too. There has to be a balance between academic expectations and helping us become better people. From Jared. The arts are extremely important in middle school. Band has helped me learn self-discipline, to work as a team, and to perform in front of large audiences. Maddie, a reluctant learner. My middle school setting has helped me develop relationships with individual teachers. My teachers take the time to get to know me as a person, not just a test score. They tailor my education to fit my learning style and have helped push me farther than I ever thought possible. And Emily. Middle school students need time to figure out who they are. We know math, reading, social studies, and science are important to our futures, but we also need time to focus on who we are as individuals. We need to learn how to set and reach goals, how to study for tests, and explore our gifts and talents in a low-risk setting. My middle school students prove to me each and every day that a school model and curriculum tailored to their adolescent needs is imperative to their future success. I'm honored to have the opportunity to join young people along this journey, a journey that strengthens their academic skills, but also helps develop their character, gives them strategies for a successful future, and most importantly, values and validates their voices, voices that continue our country's pursuit of the American ideals and will undoubtedly be heard. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Nash, and I teach kindergarten in Payla. This is my 10th year in education, nine years in full-day kindergarten and one year and half-day kindergarten. I would like you to take a second and think back to your kindergarten experience. Most of you probably see a teacher, a sing-songy teacher in a plaid jumper, and she probably held your hand, taught you the ABCs, gave you your half-gram cracker in your milk and a nap, and then sent you home with your mom at lunchtime. This is nothing more than a memory. These days have long since passed. Kindergarten Today is teaching kids at a preschool level, a kindergarten level, a first-grade level, all in one classroom. Kindergarten Today is teaching sight words, reading, addition, subtraction, appropriate relationship skills, character education to all of these kids in that classroom. Kindergarten Today is also teaching parents how to be actively involved in teaching them that they are the key to their child's educational success. So many parents come to kindergarten unsure of what their role is in their child's education. Full-day kindergarten sets the precedent of what is to come in their, in their child's educational career. The benefits of early childhood education and all-day kindergarten can be seen through children everywhere. I would like to share some of these successes with you today. Chase, a nonverbal student that came to us this year in kindergarten. His parents debated if he even belonged in a public school setting, and I won't lie when we had reservations ourself. However, Chase has gained words, patience, academics, relationships through all-day instruction. The leaps and bounds that he has accomplished are truly amazing. Looking back, I feel guilt thinking that full-day kindergarten was not where he belonged. To have put him anywhere else would have been detrimental to his success. Ruth, a bright-eyed, blond-haired little girl that came to kindergarten reading on a first-grade level, is now able to be challenged to her maximum potential. She is now reading at a second-grade level and helping students such as Chase. I am sure you can understand the utter joy that I felt when I heard that the state of Kansas was looking to possibly fund full-day kindergarten. I was so thrilled to hear that we were finally on the path to deeming kindergarten important enough that every child in our state would be educated equally and parents would be held accountable and involved. The day where only some kids are allowed to reap the benefits of all-day kindergarten would be gone. There will be no more lotteries, no more pay-to-go, and no more half-educated children heading to first grade. Full-day kindergarten is a quality for our five- and six-year-olds across the state. The choice to invest in early childhood education will reap numerous benefits for years to come. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Katie Perez. I teach fourth grade at Morgan Elementary in Hutchinson. In education, we have many different stakeholders. Government agencies, school boards, local communities, taxpayers, and parents all hold a vested interest in public education, and we must keep our accountability to these stakeholders in the forefronts of our minds. However, we are first accountable to the students. The kids in the seats are the reasons that we teach. The public's focus can easily be shifted away from these stakeholders. What most of us see is a marginalized view of education. What most of us see is a marginalized view of education: a student ID number and a test score and a small sum of money. From where I stand, though, the focus can never change. Each day, 25 different students walk into my classroom eager to learn, and it is my sole responsibility to ensure that they do. It's a seemingly impossible task that educators make a reality every day. To do this, I must get to know these young people. I need to know what their passions, their goals, their strengths, and their challenges are. Each day, I must somehow make the content that I present relevant to 25 different individuals. Currently, we're at a turning point with the Kansas Career-- I always say this backwards, sorry-- Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. My students are given a platform to collaborate, to-- I'm sorry. Shaking. To create, connect, collaborate, and most importantly, to think on their own. On a daily basis, by designing my instructional practices to support these standards, I am able to facilitate an individualized learning environment for each student in my room, helping to fuel a burning desire in each one of them to achieve his or her personal best. In preparing to be here with you today, I asked my students what they would like for you to know about who they are and what they need from you. After a long and interesting conversation, their final response makes me very proud to be their teacher. They said they would like you to know that they are not simply kids; they are our future. And in order to be ready to lead us tomorrow, they need us to invest in them today. I invite you to my classroom to witness firsthand the amazing discoveries and successes that my students make. I believe you would be astonished at the discoveries that my students make every single day. I would also like for you to keep in mind that your goal of providing an education that is based on the individual gifts of each student in Kansas is the same goal that all eight of us here and every teacher across the state holds in our own hearts. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name's Marnie Haye. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Prey Woodman Elementary in Mays, Kansas. Math is my passion. I say that now, but I did not always feel this way. I've always been a rule follower, so math, when I was growing up, made me feel successful and secure because I can follow a rule, and that is what I was taught. Follow this rule, and you will understand math. Little did I know how much I really did not know about math. My mathematical understanding started to grow when I became a math instructional coach, an educator that helps other educators become even better. I was able to go to math trainings sponsored by groups like Kansas Teachers of Mathematics and the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. What I learned and never knew that I did not know was that math is so much more than rules. It is perseverance, abstract reasoning, modeling and using tools, communication, and structure. What I just described are the mathematical practices that introduced the math standards, and they were created by those same math organizations such as NCTM that helped me become a better math teacher than I ever thought I could be. Yes, math still has rules, but now, in my classroom, thanks to the more concise and in-depth standards, my students are able to explain why the rule works, apply their understanding to other math situations, and have conversations with peers and parents about their new learning. Recently, we had a parent night at my school to help parents understand what their children were learning in math class. We hoped for about 25 to 30 parents. We got over 100 on a cold and wet night in the middle of the week. As we led our presentation, we heard parents comment like, "I wish I had known the why behind the math," or "This really helps me be able to sit with my students so that we can both be great in math." This is all due to the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. I invite you to come to my fourth-grade math classroom and sit with my students who call math their favorite subject. Listen to their math talk and see the power in how my students are learning. Math, with the direction of the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards, is my students' passion. Remember, our Kansas kids deserve the best. Help keep their passion alive. Thank you.
My name is Mary Lonker, and I teach at Womigo High School, and I'm the English Language Arts teacher, one of them. I'm going to read to you a good passage from one of the books I teach in school. "Shoot all the blue jays if you want, if you can hit 'em, but remember, it's a sin to kill a mockingbird." That was the only time I ever heard Atticus say it was a sin to do something, and I asked Miss Maddy about it. "Your father's right," she said. "Mockingbirds don't do one thing but make music for us to enjoy. They don't eat people's gardens, they don't nest in corn cribs, and they don't do one thing but sing their hearts out for us. That's why it's a sin to kill a mockingbird." I'm assuming you all know this book or have read this book yourself. I read it for the first time when I was a sophomore in high school in Atwood, Kansas, and I read it again when I was in college, and then, of course, I've read it multiple times since then as I teach it in class. Sticking this one aside. But this year, when I taught it, I did it much different. I have a sophomore in high school, and she's in my class, which brings up several challenges. But one of them personally for me is how am I going to make my daughter ready for college? When we read "To Kill a Mockingbird" this year, we didn't just simply read the text, read the book, take a quick test, multiple choice, true, false, move on to the next book. This year, when we read the book, we looked at the Scottsboro Trials of 1931. I had my students start looking at the similarities between that case and the book as we got further into the reading. They had to compare and contrast what really happened in 1931 with those boys and what was going on in the book. We then had to research the Jim Crow laws, and they looked up what the Jim Crow laws were, how the Jim Crow laws started, and then even how they finally came to a close. We then looked at how this book took place in the '30s but actually was written in the '60s during the Civil Rights Movement, and how it all related together. They did so much more with this novel this year than just simply reading it and moving on. Her test was no longer multiple choice. Her test was no longer fill-in-the-blank. They now had to write multiple essays, and the essays had to use textual evidence from the book. They had to use textual evidence from the court cases. They had to use textual evidence from many historical documents. She had to show, along with her fellow students, a deeper understanding of the book and the vast history that went with it. Kansas College and Career Ready Standards raise the rigor and expectations of our students. I'm a teacher, but I'm also the mother of that sophomore who I want ready to go to college. I can't imagine not showing her the world of Shakespeare and Robert Frost and all of the wonderful novels and stories that we read. But because of college and career-ready requirements, our students don't just simply read the books anymore like we used to. Now they have to analyze, they have to go deeper, and they have to write, and they have to write, and they have to write. The College and Career Ready Standards promote a depth of understanding and higher-level thinking, something teachers and myself as a parent want for students in our 21st century. I am a very big supporter, and I hope you are, too. Thanks.
My name is Jeff Baxter. I'm a language arts teacher at Leavenworth High School, and I've taught for a long time. On February 24, 1978, my world collapsed with the birth of our first child. At 10:23 a.m., he breathed his last, and the world made absolutely no sense to me. Parents, pastors, friends tried to comfort us, but the only person I could bear my soul to was my grandmother, a teacher. Beginning at the age of eight, we'd sit in her rocking chairs, and we'd discuss Shakespeare and great literature to answer the questions that I was peppering her with. And so on that day in 1978, Grandma asked me what was on my mind, and I quoted Macbeth's line about life being a tale told by an idiot, full of sound and fury and signifying nothing. And my grandmother replied, "No, you're wallowing in sorrow. Read this, and we'll talk later." At the age of 93, she was still teaching me, and the poem she gave me ends, "Stone walls do not a prison make, nor iron bars a cage. Minds innocent and quiet take that for hermitage. If I have wisdom, in my love and in my soul am free. Angels alone that soar above enjoy such liberty." And I understood, and gradually, hope was restored, and my wife and I began to deal with the loss. It's that kind of relationship that I strive to have with my students. My grandmother helped me develop the abilities to critically think and problem-solve, qualities that are more important than ever for our children today. For example, experts tell us that the top five jobs in 2025, when today's high school seniors will be 30, do not even exist now. How do we, as teachers, prepare our students for that day? By helping them discover the power of critical thinking and problem-solving. Language arts is just a tool for that. Recently, one of my former students sent me a note which concluded, "Thank you for being my teacher and challenging me, thanking me for helping me discover what I am capable of doing with just a few words and a pen." And she signed the note, "Strive mightily, write thoughtfully, dare greatly," one of the lessons you taught me from literature. Savannah is ready to meet the future. My dream is that all the children in Kansas will be, too. Thank you.
It's so great to hear from all of you and see your commitment to our students in Kansas. I just feel so pleased to see that you represent our teachers, and I know that good things are happening in classrooms throughout our state. You're a wonderful example and good spokespeople for the teaching profession. Now, I know we'll have questions and comments from board members, so I'll begin with Sally Cobble.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You guys are awesome. You put into words today some things that I needed last year when I was trying to verbalize the difference in the teaching that the Kansas and college career standards will allow. And Jennifer, it started with you when you said that-- you gave an excellent example of how you taught and how you teach now, and I wished I had that verbiage a year ago. I think I would have been much more successful in my endeavors. And what I would like to ask of the commissioner is that I'm hoping that each one of you had your statements written out, and I would like a copy of each one, if you would allow it, that I might be able to use excerpts from what you did today that might make more meaningful what I am trying to do in my little part of the world. And all I can say is, wow.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just extend my wow also. What a great group. You know, as I think of Kansas and education and teaching and children, and I think that's one of the things that you really brought back, all of you. You talked about kids, and I think sometimes in education, when we get at the policy level and we get at the money level, sometimes we lose sight. That's what it's all about, is what we're doing with kids and what we're doing to prepare the future, and you guys really brought that message home. So I know you guys represent all those wonderful teachers out there in the state of Kansas, and I know you'll continue to do so. You also really talk about the children that you represent and the future. I'm just so excited to hear your message, and I know you're out there telling everybody in the state, and I just thank you for what you do, and thank you how you represent, and talking about the kids, talking about the difference now in education. It really is different, and what the standards are doing and what it allows you to do with the kids. So, you know, boy, you guys rock. You know, you're great. Keep getting that message out there, and I know you'll do a great year, a great job as you continue with that. So thank you for everything that you do.
Deana Horst. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, over the years, I've had the opportunity to hear from a number of Teacher of the Year teams because I was a legislator previously, and I think you have, as Mrs. Bush said, rocked everybody because you have helped us see what the differences in what we were doing and what we will be doing, and how important that is for our students. And I wish every parent in this state could hear you speak because I think even those who have a lot of questions about the college and career-ready standards and their rigor and whether they're really needed would maybe take a step backwards and say, "Maybe I've gotten the incorrect information." So thank you very much, and I look forward to hopefully also getting a copy of your statements because I get the opportunity to visit with a lot of those naysayers. And so, and many of them are policymakers, and I'm sorry that not every legislator got to hear you speak because I'm assuming you were just before the Education Committee, and those folks know what you've said, but they don't always maybe share that. So thank you very much again for your love and your caring that you showed all of us today for the students of this state.
Janet Waugh.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to add my wow. I am so impressed. I think what I-- the message I got back from you is how much education has changed. Kindergarten teacher. Jenny, is that right? You talked about how kindergarten was different than when we went to kindergarten. I didn't go to kindergarten. Therefore, I have never learned everything I need to know. I'm learning. Now you know my problem. However, my children went to kindergarten, my grandchildren went to kindergarten, and I've been involved in education for more years than I want to tell you. And I have seen not only kindergarten, but all the grade levels change. The way education is delivered today is so different, and I guess the one thing you confirmed to me is I have been involved on a board level for many, many years, locally and on the state board, and I keep thinking, I thought to myself many, many times, will we ever get it right? I mean, you know, there ought to be a time when you get it right, you know, and we are through, but I've decided we'll never get it right because society continues to change, children continue to change, needs continue to change, the world continues to change, so therefore, we must-- So therefore, we must continue to change and do, and so therefore, what's good today, five years from now, we may not think is right, but thank you. You are such an outstanding representation of what we have in Kansas, and I applaud you, and I thank you very much.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. I feel wonderful just listening to the entire group of educators here, and I have to share that I'm old. I think I'm the oldest one of the members here, but kindergarten for me was in an all-black elementary school. There was no plaid. I just love what you're sharing, because they were all in black dresses, dark dresses, suits, always, heels is what I grew up with, and I had orange juice and a graham cracker. But just wonderful, wonderful thoughts. I took notes of everything that was said, and I'm just going to share the last thing that I truly love, and I got it wrong, because that's the way I am, but wisdom in my love, and I can see wisdom in all of your love for our children, and I'm so thankful. And Commissioner, our next big conference we have, instead of having like this keynote person come in from across the country, why couldn't we just have this group of people be one of the big sessions that we have? Thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments? Steve Roberts.
Thank you. Very quickly, I'd like you to never retire. You know, I come at this thing from a different direction, and I promised myself when I was 17, someday I would retire to a math class. And I think we ought to have more teachers who are not working toward retirement, but just want to stay young, connected to young people. So, it's not just a flippant comment. I truly hope that you're not just working toward retirement. Thank you.
Well, I would like for you to join me in applauding these people. And we are going to take a break, I believe, for a photo op and presentation of certificates.
Yes, let's do that. It'd be easiest, then we could curtail it now. Excuse me, can we have all the K-Toy people up front, please? I think we're going to have to do two lines here. We have to do two lines. As long as I can see eyes, it's fine. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. I can, let's see. Do it. You just take one little step. There you go. That good? Okay, and let's see. Everybody find, I always do this with my theater group. Everybody find a hole. So, why don't you move back a little bit this way? And whatever I don't get, I get it post, right? Oh, that's awesome. Got it? Get one more, just in case somebody blinks, because everybody does. I get the halo thing with him and the seal. It'd be awesome. Okay. All right. Yes, we are. Okay, smile. Great. Actually, if we could take one step this way, that glow from that, it wasn't so bad in the last one, but this one's. Wonderful, great. Let me take one more. Hold on. Terrific. Oh, that's a great one. Let me take one more. As soon as my camera wakes up, there we go. Terrific. Thank you. Let me get one more. Great. One more. Terrific.
We are officially dismissed for lunch, in case somebody wonders.